Welcome to February 4th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. Out of courtesy, I ask that you please put your phones on silent. And one other thing, call to the public. And just to let you know, we can't respond on call to the public because generally those are items that aren't on the agenda. With that said, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Dr. O'Nara, you want to lead us in the pledge, sir?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item B, adoption of the agenda, Mr. Manager.
Mr. Chair, there's no changes to the agenda.
Okay. This time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adopt the agenda, allowing Chair to deviate as needed.
I move to approve this agenda's presented and allow the Chair to deviate as necessary. Second.
A motion of the second, any questions, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to move on to item C, call to the public. First lit is from Mary Darling. Good morning, Mary. State your name and address for the record.
I think I need a step stool. Good morning and thank you, Mr. Manager. My name is Mary Darling. I live at 455 West Crawford Street, Nogales, Arizona. And I'm here today to read a call to the public because I didn't want to miss anything. Plus, I'm super nervous. So I have three things and I will keep it to the three minutes. We've heard a lot about accountability and transparency over the last couple of months in particular. And in that spirit, I have three asks regarding Stone Garden funding. First is the status of the pension funding that the county holds and was responsible for. The most recent results reports, exactly what is Stone Garden doing? There's a lot of folks who really don't know. And an inventory of the resources provided under this program. There seems to be a difference of opinion, in fact, of the resources and who is responsible for those. So an inventory would be helpful. These resources are funded and dedicated exclusively for Stone Garden and should not affect day-to-day operations, is my understanding. Additionally, I believe both the county and Nogales Police Department will be receiving over $2 million in additional grant funding from the recent grant from Governor Hobbs' office. And therefore, transparency around those incoming funds seems to be important as well. Tomorrow night on City Council Agenda is a consent agenda item concerning Stone Garden as well. Second, with the new administration's directive of zero tolerance on immigration, increased focus on deportations, I wanted to remind everyone that we all have rights, regardless of our status. We all have rights and that there are resources in this community available if you are concerned. And finally, the local Democratic Party is here to support the community. And if you have questions or concerns about any of these new executive orders or guidance or procedures, we can be reached at 520-223-9960. My understanding is there are a lot of people in this community that are scared and concerned, and we are all here to help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Larry Frederick.
Could it be helpful if you would call out the name of the speaker that's coming after the speaker that's coming up so that we can get it together?
Sure. Bonnie.
Hello, my name is Larry Frederick. I live at 132 Camino Maricopa, Rio Rico. I have lived in the county for the last 25 years and same address for the last 20 years. First of all, congratulations to you, gentlemen, on winning election and reelection. I haven't seen some of you since then, but congratulations. My concern is about the contract for being offered for Ms. Stephanie Smith. Not so much the fact that it is being offered, but that it includes a 20% pay raise from $80,000 a year to just under $100,000 a year. That is a pretty big jump. It basically is the amount of a low-level employee's full salary for a year. And this is not a time that I think our county is in a position to be considering that kind of a pay increase for anyone. We do not know what the future will hold, but financially, it does not look very good for us as a county and as people. And I think this is sending the wrong message to constituents, and I pray that you will reconsider this great big increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie, having trouble reading your last name?
Tetrye, Bonnie Tetrye, Dr. Bonnie Tetrye from Rio Rico, Mr. Fanning's district. Board of Supervisors and fellow citizens, I stand before you asking you to slow down, relook at the raise and the contract you have for Stephanie Smith. Just last year, you signed a two-year contract with her. Now you want to give her another monthly contract with a 20% to 25% raise. We as citizens have no clue as to what she's done the last year. I know she can't tell us that, but we've not been informed of it. We as citizens, if she was in the healthcare arena, she would have to do a self-examination yearly for a merit raise. In a county that's already been robbed by Liz Gufter, our school district and our fire department has suffered greatly. Please do not pass this raise on to the citizens of this county. You are to be the gatekeepers of excess spending, and you have to answer to the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam Lemke, I'm sorry. And next is Robin Lucky.
Hi, Supervisors and everybody here from the community. I'm Pam Lemke, and I live in Tubac, Arizona. I am a monthly volunteer with Friends of the Santa Cruz River's River Watch team, and I'm also a volunteer with the Medical Reserve Corps of Southern Arizona. And I'm here to speak today about the agenda item J2, the amended professional services contract with Stephanie Smith. Briefly, Ms. Smith currently has a two-year contract that was approved in February 2024. The amended contract represents an almost 20,000 or 25% pay increase in her existing contract without a status report on what she's done or any justification specified for the proposed increase. These things are considered customary in professional jobs requiring advanced education and work of an intellectual nature, which is what the county attorney said in writing up why this should go forward. Given the financial losses suffered due to Ms. Gufter's actions, it also seems prudent to pause amending existing contracts right now for the sole purpose of a pay raise. Voters have indicated they want more transparency and fiscal responsibility. Now, I've had several conversations with Ms. Smith that I've found interesting and helpful. She gave me some links on climate resilience and adaptations to share with my neighbors so that we can discuss the types of benefits and adaptations we want when negotiating a GNA. But she also indicated that she's not free to speak with community groups by invitation on these things. So what I would like to suggest is that the Board of Supervisors consider having study sessions where either she or yourselves could present some of this information and give us some status updates, or we could have town halls and that we could address some of these issues. The current website, I feel, is inadequate for really having a meaningful dialogue on these things, and it's not easy to find for the people that don't know that it's there. And it's being hosted by one of the signatories who's not representing the people of this county. County residents deserve a better understanding of what protections and benefits should be considered when negotiating a GNA. These meetings could be used to provide the status updates on how the negotiations are progressing. Extractive industries are known polluters, and we're going to live with these consequences for generations. So I'm just asking you to continue this agenda item for several months and engage the community in a more open conversation about what's really at stake here and how they can be involved. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Robin Lucky. And next is Pam Lemke. Oh, you just went. There was two on for you. Jay Thompson. Morning, Robin.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Robin Lucky. I live at 1377 Camino Faja in Rio Rico for the last 20 years. And president, I am president of the Calabasas Alliance. I would like to address two things this morning. First, we are concerned about action item two, Stephanie Smith Consulting LLC Agreement to amend and restate. On behalf of nearly 1,000 community members who follow and support the work of the Calabasas Alliance, we are asking the Board of Supervisors to take no action on Ms. Smith's request for a 25% increase in compensation for the next three years, which is a third of a million dollars in three years. We ask the Board of Supervisors to carefully review the deliverables in the current contract. Since there appears to be minimal difference in the tasks from one contract to the new proposed agreement, why does Ms. Smith feel she deserves a six-figure salary now? What has she accomplished? Frankly, many in our community feel we are dealing with 40 million, nearly 40 million mistakes and lack of oversight from the past behavior of Santa Cruz County officials. Please be diligent and very respectful of our public funds. Secondly, and on a more positive note, in partnership with the Mel and Edith Zuckerman School of Public Health at the University of Arizona, the Calabasas Alliance is launching a community-wide air monitoring program called AirSmart. The AirSmart program will place advanced air monitoring sensors around locations in Santa Cruz County. The majority will be placed in and around Patagonia. These sensors will start the process of gathering baseline air quality data for at least two years in one of the most fragile and biodiverse places on earth and ground zero for destruction of our natural resources, starting with the very air we breathe. As a reminder, South 32 will extract extremely toxic lead, manganese, zinc, and silver. The particulate matter will inevitably get into the air. The data gathered from these monitoring devices will be placed in an online dashboard for anyone to log on and view anytime. This data will be in real time. This program will be managed locally by Calabasas Alliance volunteers and U of A graduate students. Equipment installations will begin within the next two weeks. We have the privilege of working with Doctors Chris Lynn and Denise Moreno Ramirez, who developed the program. For the record, the Calabasas Alliance will receive no compensation from this program. We are an all-volunteer 501(c) whose mission is to protect air, water, and land in Santa Cruz County. We do this work not only for the love and safety of our fellow citizens, including our precious children, but we see this program as a benefit to protect our population. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Jay Thompson. After Mr. Jay Thompson, it's Carolyn Schaefer.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Jay Thompson. Have lived in Rio Rico for almost 20 years. My firm has done consulting work for big firms for decades and am also the treasurer of Calabasas Alliance. Regarding the Smith contract, I was drafted a year ago by fellow taxpayers to ask about the original contract. Community benefits agreements are everywhere, and experts in that and NEPA, FAST 41 have been around for a long time. We all wanted to know if we were getting the best consultant and addressing the right issues. You'll find my basic contract questions in the county records back then. Yes, RFP, work items, applicants, expertise in FAST 41, and so forth, references, background, blah, blah, blah. The response was that it was not put out for bid because you didn't have to. He felt like the consultant was qualified, was known to the county from past tourism study, and came recommended. Also stated was time was of the essence. We asked that it be reconsidered, as is there were other well-qualified candidates we knew of, but it was not done. Not acceptable then, not acceptable today. We have seen the turmoil with the process since. As one stakeholder put it, we're at the same point as a year ago, having not addressed any tough issues, just new actors. Transparency and trust is nil. So Groundhog Day was Sunday, right? It's again today. County taxpayers being asked to pay up to 50% more total dollars over the past and revised contracts. For what? Contract scope checklists are similar regardless of contract size, outlining people, work, and financials. An amended contract is common with a simple requirement, what and why. So you're considering this vague, one-page scope without any detail on what and why? I've got copies of it. You've already got copies of it comparing last year and this. After a year and $80,000 or whatever's paid, who is asking to amend the agreement and for what reason and why? In the last year, 1,000 hours as a person working for half-bill day for the past year, doing mostly coordinator work with local, state, and federal entities? People work? Get to that same email. What are the work products that taxpayers paid for? We can see. Next, billings over the last year should have summaries of thousands of calls, correspondence, records, reports, meetings, et cetera. Who has those? And what is a summary that taxpayers can see? Even just something from the billing. An amended contract is supposed to detail what's being changed. It's more money in this case, changing from arid fixed in an additional year, but what for and why? Not having hours noted in it? Come on. The contract notes that invoices are paid from the county general fund, but no record is seen on the county payment records provided, like we saw today there. Where are those? Public session to hear from the consultant is needed ASAP and deserves review for obvious reasons. This is taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Carolyn Schaefer, then after Carolyn, it's Sky Leon.
Good evening, Supervisors, county staff, and members of the public. I am Carolyn Schaefer, a 28-year resident of Santa Cruz County living in Patagonia. As Patagonia Area Resource Alliance Mission Coordinator, I speak to agenda item J2. But first, multiple members of the public have told me that they have been told that the former Board of Supervisors contracted with Stephanie Smith at the request of PUA. This is not factual. I have requested a meeting with Supervisor Fanning and Manager Valdez to discuss the misinformation that is being shared with the public. My working career was as a business manager, primarily managing law firms, including an 85 attorney law firm in Palm Beach, Florida. That's a different world, I assure you. Because of that experience, I strongly suggest that this agenda item be put on hold for six months. The scope of work for the consultant is very important for all unfolding concerns about the proposed industrialized mining activity in the Patagonia Mountains. While Patagonia is ground zero, all of Santa Cruz County will be impacted by this activity. Today's agenda in J2 is to change the consulting contract. It exists. It's not going away, so it could stay as it is. But the agenda item is to change it to increase the compensation by 25% and to change it to a stated monthly compensation rather than what has been billable time. As the contracted consultant, Stephanie Smith has been involved with representatives from the county, the town of Patagonia, the city of Nogales, and the mining company South 32. Former District Supervisor Bracker was also part of that group. And it's my understanding that Supervisor Fanning has now attended his first meeting on that discussion. Given all of the above and the comments you are hearing from other county citizens, I suggest that it is important to allow Supervisor Fanning six months to work with the group and to observe the consultant's work before reconsidering this agenda item. Given our recent experiences with fiscal irresponsibility at the county, this delay will demonstrate that the county will evolve to increased transparency and improved process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Mr. Leon.
Good morning, Supervisors. Congratulations on the new configuration of the Board of Supervisors. And good morning, all public servants that are in this room and that are in this office today. My name is Sky Leon. I live in Tubac. I am the chairman of the Board of Calabasas Alliance. I have two comments today. The first one involves Stephanie Smith. I'll be blunt. She is neither qualified for a job nor was she hired in a proper manner. She needs to be dismissed. My second comment concerns the community protection and agreement, excuse me, the community protection and benefit agreement that we're involved in drafting. When compared to the $2.2 billion operating budget for the development of the Hermosa project infrastructure, South 32 has contributed very little financially to our community. For example, in 2023, South 32 paid a total of $6,412.64 in property taxes to the county. That's $60,000 on their 36 parcels totaling 3,962 acres. $60,000 only in taxes paid to this county from South 32. Probably people in this room all added up paid more taxes than that. South 32 has stated they have a genuine interest in cultivating what's been known as a social license. A social license can be seen as a general acceptance by a community for a company to come in and do business. In South 32's case, their social license would mean most of the residents affected by their activities were supportive or at least neutral regarding their presence. If South 32 is serious about getting this social license, the Calabasas Alliance proposes a minimum of 5% of the Hermosa project's development cost be given for the community development project, independent of any direct benefit to South 32. Based on South 32's stated development costs of $2.2 billion, we propose a minimum of $110 million coming from South 32 for these projects. This needs to be part of the community protection and benefit agreement. One immediate use of this money should be used to pay off all current school bonds and therefore lower our property taxes. Another use should be to fill monetary holes created by the establishment of approximately $40 million from the county. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Oh, I have. This was put together by Giuliano. This is all the parcels that South 32 owns and how much taxes they paid on it in 2023.
Thank you, sir. Travis, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Board.
Name and address for the record.
Sir, Travis Arnold, Camino Josefina, Rio Rico. All right. I'm here today, I know it's not an action item, but I wanted to speak publicly regarding Sheriff Hathaway's recent decision to withdraw from Operation Stone Garden. I come here today not only to put on record, speak to the public, but also hopefully plead to the Board to try to take some action on this. Look, I get it. I understand Sheriff Hathaway's point of view with this. Our federal government has gone through some changes in the last couple of days. A new president has taken office. Our times are changing, but his effect on anything that's happening on the federal level is absolutely minimal. The effect what this is going to have is absolutely going to be catastrophic for our local officers and our public safety. You know, overtime is one thing. When I was a sergeant with the sheriff's office, I always preached to my guys, don't live above your means, don't rely on the Stone Garden. It could go away at any point in time. But you know what? It was an added benefit that they had. But besides the benefit for the personnel side, the benefit for the community is what's, I mean, most concerning to me. Looking as a former supervisor with the sheriff's office, when we'd have calls come in that, you know, are unique to us on the southern border, when we'd have rescues, when we had humanitarian issues, when we had assists to our federal counterparts, when we had to do dead body recoveries, these were calls that we relied on Operation Stone Garden units for. And with that being withdrawn, it's going to be detrimental for our staffing and our manpower for the sheriff's office. The morale is suffering. I've talked to the deputies, and right now, the estimate is between eight to 12 people lost. These are bodies that you're going to have to fill. That's going to be very expensive. The cost to repay the grant, to repay all of the equipment that's been purchased under the grant at fair market value is going to be a big cost to the county. Estimates are putting it well over a million dollars. I know your guys' hands are tied. I understand that Sheriff Hathaway is an elected official, but this is also a business as a county. Use this as a negotiation tool. Make him realize that if he's going to make these decisions and affect the taxpayers, affect the employees of the county, that you need to use this as a bargaining chip. Do something to help out these employees in return. My biggest suggestion for right now is let the deputies unionize. Give them meet-and-confer status. Let them have a voice for their employment status here at the county. Because right now, unfortunately, it's never been recognized, it's never been approved. And that might be one initial step to kind of help the damage that's being caused by Stone Garden being taken away. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnold. Anyone else wishing to come up on call to the public? Anyone online? Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to item C, current events. Mr. Davis. Good morning, sir. How you doing today?
Pretty good. Well, yeah, I've been working and visiting some people. I'm very, hopefully, close to announcing something, but I don't want to say until I can have it, you know? The only thing that I can tell you that I just went down to the public library and donated my, like, 80 books I had on film production. They're going to take a look at them. The ones that don't work, I'll bring them back and find another place for them.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Fanning?
Good morning. I have quite an extensive list here. First of all, thanks to Robin and Calabasas Alliance for their work with the air monitors. Very much appreciated for our county. I want to remind everyone of the Copper Mountain Air Open House on February 16th. I believe that's a Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Nogales International Airport. I want to thank the Santa Cruz Shining Program for their third annual Santa Cruz River cleanup this past weekend. Thank you so very much. I attended the Santa Cruz County School Superintendent Education Leadership Consortium on Wednesday. That was the day after our last meeting. A fellow always does a wonderful job. Also, I was fortunate enough to attend the Governor Hobbs press conference regarding Real Water Working Group. I am a rookie member of that team and anxious to continue to work with the fine folks throughout the state of Arizona. I visited the Sonoyda Fairground last week on the same day and also a Patagonia basketball game. So it's nice to get out the eastern portion of the county and see what's happening out there. Part of the First Things First meeting, so I thank Pancho Padilla for all that he does for birth to age five. Let's see, I want to announce that the first advisory committee for District 3 is going to be happening on Wednesday, March 19th, here at the county complex. And then after that, it will be moved throughout the county. And lastly, I want to share my condolences. One of our, I went to school with her, my wife went to school with her, the passing of Sally Roebling, the unexpected passing. My thoughts and prayers to her family. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I personally want to start out by also sending out my condolences to the Roebling family. I attended a funeral this Saturday of a former teammate of mine, good friend, wonderful person, Paul Bachelier. My thoughts and prayers go out to his family. He's got a wonderful family, four young boys, and I just want to send out my prayers to that family. Also, Mr. Omar Cabrera's Also, Mr. Omar Cabrera's son passed this Saturday tragically, and the young man pretty much had one of those lives where he struggled and fought and fought and fought and fought, and unfortunately died at an early age. And so my thoughts and prayers go out to the Omar Cabrera family. Rolling on to a different note, our president, as we've heard, has been busy with executive orders. He shook our boots here at the county with all our federal grants last week through the diversity equity and inclusion funding. I know he, it was settled, but it's not, it's not fully done. The other item that's real critical to our community is the tariffs, tariffs on Mexico, Canada, and China, specifically Mexico. I know my good friends, the custom brokers, really have been meeting all weekend long, and our fresh produce, along with our maquilas, are also really worried and strategizing. I know it was pushed back a month, and I want to commend Mexican President Pavlovich because she has handled the situation very professionally. I am confident that there will be a good resolve, and we will move forward in a professional manner, and our produce industry, along with our maquila industry, will continue to flourish. I also want to thank Jesse with Santa Cruz Shining. I normally attend those events but couldn't because it was during Paul Bachelier's funeral. And that's all I have to report. We'll go ahead and move on to the manager report.
Mr. Chair, members of the Board, I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Item E, Departments, Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash and Investments, Expenditures, and Revenue Reports. Mr. Chavez, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $20,835,976 with an investment amount of $15,984,133. Road Fund has an overall balance of $6,277,340 with an investment amount of $7,880. The Flood Control District Fund has an overall balance of $2,834,266 with an investment amount of $297,798. And the Jail District Fund has an overall balance of $4,719,949 with an investment amount of $3,250,472. Total for all funds, $62,188,130 with an investment amount of $21,586,695 for an estimated end of the month balance of $12,319,821.
Thank you. Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you, sir. Item two, Departments, Update. Any departments wishing to present? Yes, sir.
Can we get that up there? Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Board, members of the public.
Mr. Bass.
I will be sharing the Real Auction site for us and give a quick tutorial of what it looks like and how simple it really is. If you can just click at the bottom where it says Click Here, please, Javier. So as that's loading up, the link to this website is available on the Treasurer's website on the county site. You can also just access it by Googling realauction.com, go into the home, and then clicking on Clients, and you'll click on Santa Cruz County. If you can click Home for me, please, right at the top. You want to make sure on the left-hand side, on the left-side pane of where it says General, you want to make sure you read the bidding rules. It shows a lot of information exactly on how the bidding process works, so if you can click on bidding rules for me, please, Javier. It'll show you how to register. If you're not completely familiar with the statutes that govern the tax lien sales in the state of Arizona, it does provide you with the statutes right there for the certificate of purchase. It's ARS 4218118 and 4218116. Those are for the fees, the certificate fee and the processing fee. The processing fee is a non-refundable fee per statute 4218153. And one very important here, note on this page is that the Treasurer does not make any guarantees that a purchaser will make money on a purchase and should be aware of the fact that the property owner has the right to redeem the tax lien at any time. So simply by participating in the tax lien does not guarantee you an increase in return. You want to review the summary of the important dates below. It'll show you right there, number three, that you'll need to register. It uses a single simultaneous bidding entity rule, so it's only, which states that each bidder can register only once and cannot have a contractual or any other agreements with any other entity. The bidding process, so you need to decide how much you want to invest in the tax certificates for this auction. They provide a simple, basic example there. If you want to spend $10,000 on this tax lien, then you need to make a deposit of exactly 10% of that amount when you're registering in order for you to participate. Bid on as many quality liens as you can. Your deposit will limit, will limit how much you can win, no matter how many bids you place. There is no penalty for running out of deposit money. If you are fortunate enough to win all the liens you want, your remaining bids are simply ignored, okay? Part of this process as well, which goes a little bit further, deeper down, if you are doing multiple bids, it's always going to go to, obviously, the highest bidder, in this case, the lowest interest bidder. If the first person, the winning bid, does not pay the full amount by the fourth, or the 14th, I'm sorry, the 14th of February 4:00 p.m., it'll automatically go to the next bidder, okay? Payment for the certificates, one will be accepted by ACH only. We will not accept wire transfers or counterpayments or mail checks, credit card, anything like that, is simply through ACH. Down here is the summary of the important dates. Our website is up and running. It has been up and running since the 24th of January. Bidding begins as of the 24th of January, so you can actually start bidding now on these parcels that are up for tax lien sales. The deposits, registration fees, and the budgets end on February 13th, which is next Thursday at 4:00 p.m. There's nine batches that were created from the almost 7,000 parcels that are on the tax lien sale this year with about $13 million in value. So those are in nine batches. They close in 60-minute intervals. The first batch closes February 13th at 8:00 a.m. The last batch will close at 4:00 p.m. After the batch closes, you will no longer be able to bid on those parcels. So it's also very important, and I'll show you right now how to access that, so you can start doing your homework now and be ready to start bidding on at least the batch number one. That will end at 8:00 a.m. on the 13th. Go down a little bit more, I think I've covered everything here. Yep, there's, you can also use public computers that are available at the public library or at the county recorders, and that is it for this page. If you can go back up for me, please. If you click on Results on the General as well. So after each batch closes, you can click on the results and then the Sold To link, and it'll provide you who the winning bids were. That's this page, you'll have to play around with it a little bit. Once it's actually active and there's some bids in there, you'll be able to see who the winners are. If you can go back to the main page, please. If you can click on Place Bids under Get Started. So this is where your fund will begin. These are the nine batches that will appear on the page. You can start bidding on all of them, but a reminder, they close in 60-minute intervals. It gives you the times that they close on each one, so the batch number one will close at 8:00 a.m., the last one closes at 4:00 p.m. In order to get into that, you just click on the number on the left-hand side, so you can click on number one. It'll generate all the parcels that are listed for the tax lien sale in batch number one. Each batch includes a map of the parcel, so you can just simply click on it. You don't have to go visit our Assessor's website and then go back to the Treasurer's and then go back to this and all that. You can just simply click. If you can click on the map for me on the first parcel, it'll bring up the property view for you, map and picture. So that's how you're able to look at what you are potentially purchasing. If you go down a little bit more, there's, right there, where you see that circle next to the map, it just says that there is outstanding or prior tax lien, so it goes more than 2023 or there is a tax lien already on prior years. And so you might be able to get a tax lien on the current year but not the other years. And that is pretty much it. On the side is where you'll put your bid, you'll put your percentage, and then hit Bid or Cancel if you want to continue or not. And then if you can go back to the main page. Click on, go down a little bit more. You can, in the jump to, you don't have to click on it, but in the jump to, you can see all the states that are participating through realauction.com for their tax lien sales, where the ninth county in the state of Arizona now using this service for their tax lien services. So majority of Arizona is on realauction.com as well. If you go up, there should be a training, and I don't see it, so I'll let them know. Scroll down a little bit more, it should be on the left-hand side. I don't see training, maybe I'm missing it. No, I don't see it, so I'll let them know. It might be on the first page before you actually log in, but there is a Training tab that I recommend that you, if you don't know how the tax lien sale process works, what it entails, please visit that training so you can get some additional information. A tax lien sale does not mean that you become the property owner by paying the property taxes. It just means that you are paying the property taxes for that owner, you place the lien on the property, and after a certain period of time, if that is not redeemed by the property owner, then you can begin the foreclosure process in the judicial system. So that is exactly what would be taking place if you participate in this auction with us. There is an FAQ. I also recommend you look at it, review it, revise it. I printed it out, we have copies in our office, but any questions you might have in regarding to the tax certificate sale auction, your answers will be right there online for you as well. Any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen?
Thank you.
I just want to say something. So this is actually our third meeting here, right? So I really appreciate that you have come and provided all these updates in all the three meetings so far.
Of course, of course. I will continue to do so as long as I have updates to provide you.
Thank you for your detailed presentation and all your hard work that you've been putting into your office.
Appreciate it.
Really appreciate it.
Of course, my pleasure. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, we'll go. Mr. Fontes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. I'd just like to give you an update on the current public works of flood control district projects that we're working on. The first one is the Ruby Road Dredge over the Pothetto Creek in the Union Pacific Railroad. Previously, we had, you guys had approved an IGA with ADOT and the Federal Highway Administration to allow us to use the funds in a discretionary method. They came back, and now they want to see all federal funds just used for construction, which is fine. We'll be using our internal funding for design. The benefit of that is that it allows ADOT to use a less stringent selection process, and they will, they will select the consultant, the design consultant that will be working on the project, and it cuts down about six months of the procurement process, so it speeds up the process. The design, once, once everything is approved, the design will take over about 18 months. We're currently scheduled for construction in January of 2027, so that, that project is moving forward. The second one is the I-19 interchange improvements from Rio Rico Drive to Ruby Road, and that includes the improvements on the Ruby Road interchange along with the East and West Friendage Roads. We had a kickoff meeting last week with ADOT, the consultant team, and county staff. We went over the scope schedule and some of the items that were of concern. We reiterated the importance for meetings with the stakeholders and the community, because there's a lot of moving targets in this thing, in this project, and they acknowledge that. We're looking at, at the design to be completed sometime in September of '26. During this period, we will be looking at alternate funding sources for construction. We anticipate that the cost for the entire project will be somewhere between $45 to $50 million at current prices, so we'll need to get pretty aggressive and try to look at those funding sources. The, the next project is the Babo Camari Creek Bridge replacement. ADOT is working with, with the consultant on final scope and schedule. We went over some of the key factors that are going to impact that structure. Again, visibility, public involvement, stakeholders. We know that we're going to have to build a detour, so we need to figure out how best to do that so we don't disrupt a lot of the businesses, especially with the wine industry. We're looking at that to be, the design to be completed in the fall of '26 with construction slated in '27. On the Flood Control District side, the current project that we're working on, Ephraim Canyon Retention Basin, we just received an alternative analysis from the consultant. It identified the type of structure that is possible for this project. That still meets the footprint of the original application. At the end of February, we'll get an updated report. At that time, we're going to meet with the Arizona Department of Water Resources and with DEMA. We'll go over the proposed design, make sure that there's concurrence. If everybody's in agreement, we'll move forward with the design of that project. The other project that we're working on is the Nogales Channel Repair along Hoakum Drive. You know, during the past monsoon season, we had a couple of failures. We were able to address a couple of panels, the city addressed one area, but the bigger problem is an area where the channel goes from a narrow channel to a wide open. It's outside of the Concrete Light Channel. The problem with that area is that that's where the IOI goes from underground into the bank of, of the, of Hoakum Drive. So we're looking at an alternative design that will protect that, that will also make sure that the IOI is, is stable and that the channel is stable. We've completed the, the concept, the design concept, and now we're looking at the costs, and we'll see how we move forward. We have an opportunity to approach the Corps of Engineers under their 595 program. They're looking at projects that they could possibly fund, and this is one of the, one of the projects that we're going to include on that list. The other project that we're working on is the Downtown Nogales Flood Plane Feasibility Study. After we completed the remapping, we know that the area is still affected by the flood plane, but it's, but it's limited. The current undertaking looks at all the individual structures and see what the impacts of the flood plane are and how they can possibly improve those areas. We're looking at each, at each structure individually, we'll come up with a, with a recommendation, and that information's going to be available for whoever needs, needs to look at it, if somebody wants to come in, possibly invest in that area, they'll know what the, what the restrictions are based under the current flood hazard information, or flood hazard insurance program is. Along the same lines with that program, we're also revisiting our flood plane ordinance. Ours tends to be a little bit restrictive, and it, it doesn't allow for a lot of flexibility when you're trying to improve existing structures that are within the flood plane. We're going to revisit certain items under our ordinance. If we need to amend it, we will. We're also looking at possibly adopting a different ordinance that may be a little bit less stringent and allows for a better method of less stringent and allows for a better method of improving properties within the flood Within our departments, we're gearing up for our chip seal season. We're looking at possibly twenty miles within the northeastern portion of Rio Rico, some a few roads within the northwest portion of Rio Rico. The crews right now are looking at roadside preparations, clearing out of drainage channels, clearing out of vegetation. We'll do our chip seal at the beginning of May. Following in June, we're going to start our our striping program again, so that's pretty much it. Do you have any questions for me?
Any questions, gentlemen?
Yes, not a question, a few discussion points. I was part of the Ruby Road Rio Rico Drive interchange along with the the frontage road modifications. I want to say thank you for your knowledge and for your input. I was also able to visit some of the sites that would be affected, and I'm excited, you know, as we we look forward to that. I've also dealt dealt Mr. Fontes with you and a few other constituent concerns, and I want to say thank you for your for your rapid response.
Thank you.
I too want to thank you in reference to the Rio Rico Drive. The two east and west frontages are so critical because it's going to take out a lot of congestion, congestion from that Ruby exit and both Yabapai exit as well. It's a critical project. All these are great, and thank you for the detailed reports, sir.
Okay, thank you.
We'll go ahead and skip item F, come back to that. Item G, discussion item, public education. Mr. Davis.
Yeah, so let me.
So what Mary said, for example, like this initiative of transparency, right? So I want to introduce something, and I'm going to read it from my phone, like public educational segments. So as part of the ongoing effort to enhance transparency, public engagement, and educational outreach, I'm proposing introducing the introduction of public educational segments, a new initiative designed to bring our community closer to the working workings of the county departments and operations. The idea is to hold one or two public educational segments per month, alternating the these meetings. And what I see is that I would invite different staff heads, department heads, and talk about what they do and basically have a longer piece, right? And then cut them into pieces and throw them on social media so that people can learn more on the county and what they do. This would be a birth for this podcast that I that I have in mind, as a like to keep getting the word out and for the community to understand what we do. And I would like to start probably with executive meetings. I mean, this would be like just to understand why they take place, how, when to go, when to avoid them. So a lot of those questions, that's something that I would like to start doing, and that's basically, I would like to start a month from now, like basically after the the meeting that we have the following week. And then we take place, I still have to talk to Mr. Vandez, the I T department, and it would take place here where we can bring the people and have those sessions.
Okay. So I don't know if you guys have any questions, comments for me, or what do you guys think?
Mr. Fanning.
Yes, I I applaud that and look forward to those study sessions. I I'm hoping that you involve Shannon Hall in in those discussions because I know that she has she has expressed interest in going through government one-on-one, you know, with the public so that they understand exactly what's happening within the county in all in all the departments of the county. So I applaud that and look forward to that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
One quick question from a legal from a legal stand. Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Mary?
As far as Ms. Hall being involved in those?
No, 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 just because I would like to be, can they be here part of it, or only have to be me? Can we alternate?
The question maybe is if you have two or more supervisors present, then it becomes a public meeting. And proper notice needs to be made, and whether the those supervisors are going to make any kind of a decision or not, probably needs to be determined. If it's more of an educational type of thing and there's no decisions being made, that's then it's just a study session.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing bringing this up, and I too have been in conversations with Ms. Hall, and I know she's working on an item like that, so go ahead and discuss it with her, and and hopefully we can make it a combined effort.
Yeah, the leader like so the little segments, she would grab them and use them for social media. I already got a chance to take her brain and talk to her.
Good. I like I like the idea. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to have to recess and and move into item F, executive session. I've been told by Mr. Valdez that we have to go into executive session at ten thirty. So at this time, I'll go to item executive session, item one pursuant to A R S thirty-eight dash four thirty-one point zero three A three and four, discussion and consultation for legal advice and legal counsel and direction regarding GovNet Inc. litigation. I'd like to entertain a motion.
So move. Any second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries unanimously, and at this time, we're going to go ahead and move to to the I T building, I mean, I T office. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn executive session and move into flood control.
So move.
A motion.
Second.
And a second.
Morning.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. We're in flood control.
Morning. Morning, Chairman Lara, Supervisor Fanning, Davis. Flood Control Districts and Flood Pay administrations report for January twenty twenty-five. So I'd like to start off with rainfall. There hasn't been a lot of rain lately. The Nogales area received four hundredths of an inch in January, and the average for the area is one point two five inches. So Santa Cruz County is currently in a moderate drought. Flood hazard information sheet requests, the district received one hundred eighty-six in January. We received six flood plan use permits, no site reviews, and a few drainage complaints, three of them. Moving on to projects, Ephraim Canyon Retention Basin, the Public Works Director Leonard Fontes gave you an overview of the Ephraim Canyon Retention Basin update. I have some some other information here as well that pretty much reiterates what Leonard had to say. The Colts consultant has provided an analysis of alternatives for optimization for a non-jurisdictional structure, which would provide a similar reduction of structures from the flood plain downstream. So, you know, the retention basin is is hopefully will take out some of the structures downstream of the retention basin. This optimization analysis recommended a jurisdictional structure, which would utilize a spillway over the structure that would reduce the amount of material needed while keeping the original planned footprint. Phase one fifteen percent level design plans are due in February, at the end of February, and will also include a design technical memorandum with all the geotechnical recommendations.
Mr. Chair, just for the information, a jurisdictional structure is basically a dam in A D W R's definition. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the Patagonia Regional Flood Control Project. The Patagonia Regional Flood Control Project, phase one, basically existing conditions has been completed. The consultant, Kimberly Horn, finalized the phase one existing conditions report and submitted it to the county. The county met with the consultant and requested an updated scope of work. Phase two alternative selection and preliminary design is expected in February. Also, I wanted to let you all know that we have placed the phase one flood report online. It's underneath our webpage at the Flood Control District, bottom on bottom left. It's a PDF. You can take a look at it and see what the report says, and there's also some mapping of some of the new mapping. So that's exciting. The town of Patagonia did submit a report, and it's attached. I did not hear back from the City of Nogales.
Nothing from the City of Nogales?
No, sir.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen? Okay. Anyone from the public? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn flood control and move into jail district.
So move.
A motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Item one, discussion action, possible action for authorization to fill vacant juvenile detention slash transport officer position. Budgeted item.
Mr. Chairman, it is a budgeted item.
Okay. We'll entertain a motion, gentlemen.
Move to approve authorization to fill vacant juvenile detention transport officer position.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Okay. At this time, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn jail district and move into general session.
So move. Any second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and move on to J, action items. One, discussion, possible action to approve a letter to support Cox Communications Applications for Funding Through the Broadband Equity Access and Deployment B E D Program.
I move to to approve the action item as presented.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. I I want to personally thank Juan Valdez for putting this together. It's going to be a great opportunity for our community to get good broadband access. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Okay. Item two, discussion, possible action to approve amended professional service contract with Stephanie Smith Consulting LLC for the development of Community Protection and Benefits Agreement, a Hermosa fine Hermosa mine fast dash forty-one N I P A response and related services through two fifteen twenty-six in the amount of eight thousand dollars, eight thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars per month. Gentlemen.
So move. What was that?
Move to approve.
Yeah, as presented, yeah. I move to approve the action item as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion, gentlemen?
Yes.
Yes.
I understand the concerns. I I listen. I was part of the first meeting. I am looking forward to additional meetings. I like the open dialogue that's taking place. I know there's concern with the amount of jump in pay. I'm not going to lie, it it concerns me as well, but I also know that we will revisit this at any time if if the dialogue does not continue to be open. Secondly, I will continue to meet with with folks in the community to make sure that their voices are heard.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question to Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
So if something doesn't work like the way that he's planned, can this contract end, or do we have to wait until like one or two years?
Mr. Chair, members of the board, I'll defer to our attorney, but I think there's a termination clause in there.
And the manager is correct, Mr. Supervisor, there is always, there's various provisions within the contract as it stands and has been reiterated, which is before the board. So if there is something down down the road that needs to be, or the board feels that it should be amended, then it can be revisited at that point.
Perfect.
And I believe that's thirty days.
This is a good question, Supervisor Fanning. I'd have to look at the contract again, but everything has been made public, so the terms as they are, there are, I think, I think there is one provision to even terminate the contract, but which is not uncommon in most of the contracts with the county, but the exact specifics, and I don't have it in front of me, I'd have to look at that.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? One thing I'd like to see is, one of the things that was brought up is informational sessions, study sessions. I'd like to see the public informed as to what's going on during the process, just to keep people up to date and and provide transparency, which is real critical. And that's all I have. Any other questions, concerns?
No, I agree. Maybe that could be the first or second session.
At the beginning.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to consent agenda, K one through ten. I'd like to entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I believe that's all the people's. Item L, adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Okay.
Any second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. We're now adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.